Guys, welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. It's Jerry Miller. It's great to be with you on a Tuesday, a beautiful Tuesday across Charlottesville, Alamo County, and central Virginia. My name is Jerry Miller. This, the I Love Seaville Show. It's great connecting with you on this platform. We are going to spotlight a gentleman that I think you're going to know very soon, and you're going to think very highly of, and that's Bellamy Brown, our guest, our featured, our special guest, will join us in about 30 seconds here on the I Love Seaville Show. I'm excited to introduce you to, I would say, a quintessential businessman and gentleman that has some big-time expectations for himself, and some big-time expectations for the city he loves, and that's Charlottesville, Virginia. Soon, he will join us here on the program. The phone is blowing up with Bellamy Brown being, I mean, the notifications are coming in like fire right now. Before I get to Bellamy, I got to thank some people that make this program possible. First, Interstate Pest and Service Companies. This is a four-generation strong business. Started in 1969 with the patriarch of the family, Mr. Wells. He had one truck, and he had a dream to create an empire in a business. He literally was servicing his customers, and when he was done servicing one customer, he would go to a phone booth and call from a phone booth to the other customer. Today, it's a four-generation strong business with an office on Harris, with an office in the Shenandoah Valley, with an office in Richmond. I mean, covering the Commonwealth, four-generation strong Interstate Pest and Service Company. I also want to give some big-time love to the good doctor. His name is Scott Wagner, good friend of the program, Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine. This shop, our business, V M V Brands, is the advertising agency of record for both Interstate and Dr. Wagner. Scott Wagner, who's got your back? Dr. Wagner at Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine. Harris Tolber is our director. Judah Wickhauer, Lauren Linsky, producers of this fantastic program. Lot of peeps on the feed. You're looking at 1,900 right now. I'm excited, Harris Tolber, to welcome Bellamy Brown to the show. On that note, my friend, let's go to the studio cam. And for the first time, I think, in the history of the I Love Seaville Show, I may be the least sharp-dressed individual right here. Dude makes pink look well. He's got the American flag pin right there. He's got the suit. You flossing, dude. Talk to me. What's going on right here, Bellamy Brown?
I mean, this is just...
This is every day for you?
This is work attire.
This is not every day. Is this every day?
This is work attire.
Dude, I gotta get the number for the people who put your clothes together right there. Was that Banana Republic?
No, actually.
Brooks Brothers?
No, it's not Brooks. I forget the name of it right now.
Okay.
It might be Champs.
Okay, there you go. Guys, look at Sharp. All right, I'll tell you what. I'm going to get out of the way. I know when to stop talking, and that's rare, but I know when to stop talking. That's now. Bellamy Brown, you've got some news to get out there. The show is yours, my friend.
Very well. Thank you for having me on the show, Jerry. Basically, I mean, my purpose for coming here is to announce my candidacy for the City Council, for the City of Charlottesville. This is my home. Your show, I Love Seaville, embodies what I'm about. This is, I mean, I've played soccer here, went through the public school system here, still have a number of family and friends here. And, you know, when I saw what took place a few years ago, it burdened me as someone from here, and I wanted to come back and give back during the time that I've been away. I've gained some skills, business skills, and other skills that I think will lend themselves well towards being a part of the City Council itself and working in collaboration, both with Counselor Hill and also Mayor Walker and whomever else would be on the council at that time. And I think that with everything that we have going on, especially what's taken place in the past few days here, we need to recognize the core issues that we have, but we also need to work in collaboration towards solving those and moving us forward. And I think for a little bit, we've kind of been in this stagnation point. And so, my aim is to kind of help facilitate that.
I love it. So Heather Hill is watching right now. I think the world of Heather Hill. I really do. Heather, I think you're doing a hell of a job. You have Aaron Richardson of the Daily Progress watching right now. He's the editor at the Daily Progress. You've got NBC 29 watching right now. You have the Seaville Weekly watching the show right now. So the breaking news here in Charlottesville is Bellamy Brown is going to run for Charlottesville City Council. The next question I have for you is, what is your party affiliation and why?
Well, at this point, running as an independent, and the purpose behind that is, I'm strictly about good governance and good leadership. I believe the University of Virginia Center for Politics has this quote that says, "Politics is a good thing." I think for me, from my perspective, from what I've observed as a student of American government, as a student of politics, is politics kind of pits us against each other. And when we're against each other, we're not moving forward. We're not accomplishing the goals. We're not doing the people's business. I'm strictly about doing the people's business and embodying good governance and good leadership. I don't think you need to have a party affiliation to be able to do that.
I love it. I love it. And I'm going to straight up say it. It takes balls to run as an independent in the City of Charlottesville. There's only one independent in the history of the City of Charlottesville that at least I've been told, and I follow this very closely, and that's Mayor Walker. Mayor Walker won as an independent, and we can make a legitimate argument from a political science standpoint, that when she won, it was in some ways an anomaly because it was a collision of a lot of events happening at once. And part of that is August 12th. Part of that is how things were being run at council at the time. Part of that was, she was very vocal and very high in her participation rate at City Council meetings prior to running. She did a great job of canvassing the city. She had a great core team of Dave Norris and Michael Payne, who's running for council now, in her corner, helping her run. In fact, Dave Norris told a story right here on I Love Seaville. And he said, when Mayor Walker came to me and said, and Michael Payne was there as well, and Dave Norris recounted, and he said, when Mayor Walker told me she was going to run for his independent, he said his entire body like sulked. His eyes went down to the floor, and he was trying to persuade her otherwise to run as a Democrat. I mean, it is a Democratic stranglehold. A microcosm of that is Bob Fenwick, who tried to run as an independent and had to pivot his party allegiance, alliance, and then shift to a Democrat, and then he won. So I have to ask the follow-up question, and it's a fair follow-up question. Why, Bellamy Brown, do you want to run as an independent for Charlottesville City Council?
Well, again, I understand the Democratic stronghold here, but for me, I've built relationships here, and I'm going off of those relationships. It doesn't matter who you are, whether you're white, black, you're Democrat, Republican, you're gay or straight. It doesn't matter for me. I'm here to serve the people of the community of Charlottesville, and that's what I intend to do. And I understand that even though there is a stronghold here, there are other sectors that are out there. And I want to look at this from a holistic perspective, get feedback from everyone, and be able to filter that into some sound solutions for some of the problems that we have here today.
I love it. Kaitlin Michelle Lewis, thank you for watching. Tiffany Rosales, thank you for watching. Caitlin Cosner Stanley, thank you for watching. Give the show a like and a share. That would mean the absolute world to me. Talk to us about the platform. What does Bellamy Brown stand for? What's his platform all about? Michael Payne, one of your challengers here, is watching right now. He just jumped on the show. If you wanted to say hello to Michael Payne?
Hi, Michael.
What is the platform all about? So, Michael, you just tuned in. The breaking news is you've got some more competition right here. Bellamy Brown is getting in the mix for Charlottesville City Council as an independent. What's the platform?
Well, I mean, as of right now, I'm still doing some due diligence around that, so I'm nailing those things down. But some of the core things that are pressing for me, one, the Veterans Memorial. I am a veteran myself, a member of the American Legion here. And I think that that is the first memorial in the United States for Vietnam-era veterans. My uncle served a couple tours in Vietnam, and for me, it's just one of those things that we have to give back to our veterans as a whole and treat them with that due respect and care. And when you're talking about having elderly people having difficulty getting up to the memorial itself, I think that's a challenge that we must readily address. One of the other things is I've been going around and Impact is a local group here, who their core issue, as well as many others, has been the affordable housing space. And for me, I know affordable housing has been beat to death, but when you go to those meetings, you hear the stories. You hear the stories about being out of work, and that causes a hiccup. And so, people end up losing their homes, or they don't have enough capital to be able to afford to live here. So that in of itself is another issue. And then, again, the past two days, where you look at what's taking place in Charlottesville and what took place in Alamo County with respect to the policing in that aspect. I think the community policing is a big issue. I think that Chief Brackney did an excellent job with regard to, Chief Brackney and Dr. Atkins did an excellent job with regard to keeping our students safe in addition to some other law enforcement agencies. But then you have another issue out in Alamo County where this family gets pulled over. They're not, they fit the description, so to speak. It's my understanding, the car that the police were looking for was gray. Their car happened to be black. And then, the young lady asks at the end, "Why'd you stop us?" And there was a flippant remark that it's at nighttime, whether it's blue or black. That's kind of the excuse that's given. And when you have guns pointed at someone, and you're flippant like that, that just bridges the gap in terms of community policing relations. And I think that that's a real issue that we have to be on top of.
I love it. Billy Kurnick, thank you for joining us. He's the owner of Vivy's Cakes and Candy, an entrepreneur. Dan Blake, thanks for joining us on the program. April Dent Ward of Fabulous Fifeville, thank you for joining us on the program. Like and share the stream, guys. If you're tuning in now, this sharp-dressed individual, Bellamy Brown, running for Charlottesville City Council as an independent. We called you in the promo, the promo post, a businessman.
Yes.
Lloyd Snook, we characterize as an attorney.
Yes.
Oftentimes, in today's world, in the age of social media where you check an employment box on your Facebook page or your LinkedIn page and saying, "This is what I do for a living." Sharon Drake Petro, thank you for joining us on the program. We're characterized by what we do. Is businessman the apt characterization?
I mean, I think in broad terms, yes, and because of the field that I'm in, that'll suffice. I'm in financial services, and that particular field has a tendency to keep separation from what I'm doing now, so businessman does apply.
Sarah Hill Buchinski leaves this comment, and Sarah Hill Buchinski is an entrepreneur, a real estate agent extraordinaire for Roy Wheeler. She says, "So many people are ready to move away from the two-party system," exclamation point, exclamation point, exclamation point. Hence, giving you props to run as an independent. I'm a libertarian myself, have aspirations perhaps in 2020 to run for the 5th district and challenge Jennifer Riggelman. Would do so perhaps as a libertarian. The importance of a third party in 2019, your thoughts on that question?
I mean, I think it's tough. I think we're deeply entrenched in the two-party system. I think when you're trying to bring up a third party, there's so many hurdles that you have to overcome. But from the people that I've spoken with, and it's all across the Commonwealth, they're ready for something different. I think when you look at both parties, there are challenges there. And what I've seen is, a lot of people are pushed toward the middle. And so, you do have that base that's there, but it's the apparatus of a third party that you don't necessarily have. I think the Libertarian Party may be something that's a bit close, but that would be it. So I think it'll take some time to get away from the two-party system, but there is that desire to move toward that way.
The I Love Seaville Show, guys, live across seven channels on the I Love Seaville Network. If you have a question for Bellamy Brown, put it in the chat box. Give the show a like and share. That would mean the world to us. I've got something coming in via Twitter. And this is something that's on everybody's mind, and it's the affordable housing piece. You've touched on it already. This is from Steven Croze, who owns property in the City of Charlottesville. And he says, "What are your thoughts on the talk from council of raising real estate taxes?"
So, for me, I'm still going through the financials of everything, and I haven't really completed that process. In general, being in the field that I work in in financial services, taxation is one of the biggest drivers that takes capital out of people's pockets.
It's regressive. Can I say that? You didn't say that. I said, "It's regressive."
So for me, and looking out for my clients, I try to minimize the taxation that's there. At the same token, I realize that governments run on, I mean, that's one of their revenue sources. My thinking in terms of reviewing everything is, where are we taxing too much? Where's that space that we can really kind of look at things? And are we managing our capital that we already have, that we've already extracted from our citizens? So with regard to the taxation itself, I lean more towards not. But at the same token, I haven't completed my analysis of the actual financials to be able to say...
I respect that. I respect that. Jason Rosales? You must know Jason Rosales, huh? Jason Rosales is giving you some props right now, baby. And here's the props from Jason. Jason, thank you for chiming in on the show. If you have a question, comment, concern, a positive message, a respectful negative message you want to relay to the council candidate, Bellamy Brown, I'm happy to do it as long as it's in tasteful fashion and tasteful manner. Jason Rosales says, "In local politics, political affiliation should not really matter. Bellamy Brown represents all that is good and wholesome about new and old Charlottesville, Virginia." Your thoughts right there, Bellamy?
So Jason is a good friend of mine. We actually came up and, I guess, we started at Walker together. We played in the band, and so, I mean, he's absolutely...
You play the drums?
I play, we both play the bass clarinet.
Okay. Did that help you with the ladies?
Not so much.
Okay, not so much. All right, had to ask, had to ask.
But, I mean, and he's absolutely right. So prior to coming back home, I was living in DC for a while. I hadn't been back to Charlottesville that often. And coming back home, one of the things is, I was like, "Well, where are the black people? Where are the African-Americans?" I mean, I could easily, growing up, go to Washington Park, and boom, I could find a bunch of them. But that's not the case now. So a lot has changed. In the old school, there was Washington Park, there was Tonsil Park, there was West Haven, all those. I could go there, and I can find people who look like me. And so, from that aspect, yeah, that's the old school. When you're talking about the new school and some of the changes that exist, I think, it's kind of a complex mix. You still have people that are struggling to kind of maintain and to fit into the current culture that's here. And I think part of that is the way that we look at providing jobs and things like that, whether it's, a lot of it, you have to have the four-year degree, or if you don't have a four-year degree, there's really no pipeline for your trade schools or things like that. I know there's some out there, but there's not a lot. And, I mean, just, so I can fit in where, with everything that's going on now, and whereas I don't, I mean, I hear of other people that don't feel welcome coming downtown, and you have to take those things into consideration. So the way that I view things will be a lot different from someone who's living in a West Haven or living in what's now Friendship Court. And I try to take all those ideas into consideration when I look at what I'm trying to do for Charlottesville.
How about this question? I'm going to cut to the chase. I am a straight shooter.
Yeah.
And I feel like being a straight shooter in business, being a straight shooter in life, I think is paramount because it saves our most precious commodity, which is our time. We will never get back the five minutes, the 20 minutes, 25 minutes we just have. So from my standpoint, is let's just cut to the chase.
Sure.
I look at the council candidates that are running. I see nothing but white people. Okay, I mean, not marginalizing them. I see nothing but white people. How did that influence your decision to run?
It didn't.
It did not at all?
No. So I came back home with a purpose. Like I said, when I saw August 2017, I was deeply troubled by that incident, and I looked at what was going on. So I believe City Council owes the citizens of Charlottesville a duty of care, a duty of responsibility to act in their best interest and on their behalf. I didn't see that take place at that point in time. And as I started evaluating things and looking at my skill set and my love and passion for my hometown, it's like my grandparents raised us to be servants in the community. And so, it's just like coming back, rolling up your sleeves and serving. And that's what I'm here to do, is to provide servant leadership. I don't think about someone being white, black, or anything else. No matter what you are, I'm here to serve as one of your leaders.
I love it. I love that answer. We call it the birth story, and the birth story is essentially like the evolution of you from childhood, adolescence, teenage years, college years, military service, to this point.
Yeah.
Put it in perspective, kind of like that flip book of Bellamy Brown, Charlottesville, born and raised?
Yes.
Charlottesville, born and raised, school systems, what schools you attended, college, everything?
Okay. Well, it started at, so my grandfather built, well, he used to be a home builder, built churches around here. We grew up on 12th Street, 12th and Rosser there. And so, I went to Venable Elementary School from there, the system, Walker, Buford. And then, I did my freshman and sophomore year at Charlottesville High School. My dad moved us out after that, went to Northern Virginia for a bit. Coming from here, we grew up on the poor side of town, so we didn't have a lot of capital to be able to go to college and everything like that. So the Marine Corps was my way to be able to fund my college education. After high school, I did the Marines, got out, stayed in Northern Virginia for a little bit, and then transferred to James Madison University. From there, I studied finance and political science there. From there, got my MBA and started working for Marriott up in Philadelphia.
Dude, you're a rock star.
I'm just the guy just trying to live, that's all.
Well, I appreciate your humility, but at the same time, the resume is peppered with success. I mean, you've got to know that. You're a confident dude.
I appreciate that.
Let's give some props to the people that are watching right now. Travis Washington, Justin Ross, David Deaton, Judy Ray McMullen, Jessica Wood, Joyce Jerry Hutchinson. You've got close to 2,000 people right now, seven channels across the I Love Seaville Network. If you have a question for Bellamy Brown, who's announced that he is running for Charlottesville City Council as an independent, our boy, David Bridges, just tagged Carl Brown on the stream right now. So the word is getting out, Bellamy Brown. You've got some connections here. I mean, put this in, this is a legit question.
Sure.
The pressure that you feel doing this. I mean, because it's one thing, I've been here since 2000. I've been here 19 years. Came here for UVA. I truly bleed Charlottesville. My company's called I Love Seaville. I bleed this town. You really bleed this town. I mean, how old are you?
Forty.
Okay, you're 40 years old. You grew up here. You've got to feel some pressure, don't you?
Not at all.
No pressure?
No. I think it's one of those things where it's like, I mean, some people do physics, like you do advertising. Like, for me, this is just serving. For me, that's all I'm dealing.
Great answer.
I'm out there talking to people. I'm out there, what's important to you? What can I do as one of your community leaders to make your life a bit better? For me, that's just natural to me. And then, once I gather that information, develop an action plan and consultation with other people, I mean, I'm just a part of the cog. I'm not any big show. I'm just here just to serve.
Like and share. Give the guy some props. James Watson, I see you, baby. Love you, James Watson. Jay Wyon, thank you for watching. Justin Ross, thank you for watching. Hobbies, passions, interests?
Oh, sure. Having fun?
Yeah, like how specifically? I like cold beer and good food. Spending time with my family.
Yeah, that's definitely there. I like Fridays after 5:00. I like, I mean, I still go back to DC pretty frequently. I still have friends and things up there. I do like to read quite a bit. I work out.
You're jacked, dude. Where are you working out these days?
So when I came back home, I had to go to Planet Fitness. There wasn't, I was...
Wegmans Fitness Station?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's kind of where I am.
What are you benching? You doing 225, 15 times?
No, I don't really, I don't really focus on the benching aspect. I do what's called German volume training. And so, it's a thing of where you're doing two sets or 10 sets of, like a supersets, or you're doing like two exercises, and that runs over about four to eight weeks. And so, that's generally what I focus on. And it doesn't really have like, that, oh, let's bench the max that we can do in that space.
A positive message with real solutions from your homie Jason. Matt Wilson giving you some props here. Thank you for liking the show, Matt. Saja Gala, thank you for joining us on the show here. Questions, comments, concerns? Relay it to now the Charlottesville City Council candidate, that is Bellamy Brown. Let's talk about Carl Brown's watching. What's up, Carl? Give some love to your cousin. He's watching right now.
What's going on, cousin? And so, David Bridges actually is another cousin as well.
Get out of town. So how much family you have in the area?
A ton.
So do you have, so Mayor Walker won with 7,900 votes. Do you have 7,900 family members in Charlottesville?
Not blood family members, but I consider Charlottesville my home, so we're all family at this point.
How about sports playing? The sports you play?
I did soccer, track. Well, so did I play or do now?
Well, you know, so were you an outside midfielder?
I did them all. I kind of, I started at the forward level and then kind of worked my way back to left fullback.
You're saying you had some speed?
Yeah. I mean, I still have speed, but it just progressed towards that way. I mean, I ended up loving left fullback because I'd shut people down all day long.
Did mine the physicality?
No, not at all.
Okay, I like it. I like it. Throw this to you here. Charlottesville 2019, how do you characterize our city?
I characterize it as complex. I characterize it as, we still have some raw emotions that where people are feeling deeply affected, not just by August 2017, but things that have happened prior to that. I think it's just been this history that Charlottesville has, the lights been taken off of Charlottesville. I mean, there are things that I learned in being back that I didn't know growing up.
For instance?
Well, like Fry Springs Beach Club, just the history there. Paul Goodell McIntyre, the history there with regard to the race aspects and things like that. And I think that, I think this is a, yes, it's a tough time, but it's also an opportunity for us to grow. Again, we look at these issues in a pragmatic fashion, and we're truthful about them. We don't try to push them under the rug. And if we do it that way, then we can find real solutions to kind of move us forward. So out of, in my experiences, I've had, I think Tony Bennett...
Love Tony Bennett. That's my man crush right there.
Tony Bennett is, just the other night, he was talking about these refining moments. And I've had a lot of those within my life, and I think out of each of those refining moments, something within myself was built stronger and built better. And I think the same thing applies here. This is a refining moment for Charlottesville, but we can build something greater and better. And we can look at, and it can apply across the board. It's not just one section versus another. I think when you look at how zoning and everything has played out in terms of marginalizing people, we can look at truly, really fixing those issues and those core problems.
Allison Hurt, thank you for joining us on the program. Kate Elwood, Citizen Burger Bar, General Manager, thank you for joining us on the show. Chris Turner and Croze, Tim Ryan, thank you for watching the program as well. Give the show a like and share, whatever channel you're watching, that would mean the world to us. Carl Brown, I'll get you on the show, buddy. I'll get you on the show, Carl Brown. Let me throw this to you. You brought this up, and how you brought this up was Paul McIntyre. Statues. Got to ask you about statues. My mindset has changed. Initially, my mindset, and this is going to be interesting as a military veteran. Military veterans are often very cognizant of history. So where I was with the statues initially was, the statues, if we remove them, we cannot change the racist history that's in Charlottesville. So why would we consider moving them? And then, I was here outside the Macklin Building on August 12th, much to the chagrin of my wife. She did not want me to come in here. I had to do a sneaky backdoor maneuver by saying I was going to AC/AC and then come over here afterwards. And why I was here was for two reasons. A, I wanted to, for my son, I wanted to be able to relay to him what it was like firsthand perspective to be here and what I actually saw. Second is I own the lion's share of the Macklin Building here, and I wanted to protect my investment.
Sure.
And what I saw was disturbing, evil, sin, like the stuff that I'd never seen before.
Yeah.
I mean, terrible, terrible, stuff you have probably seen before with your military service. And I don't want to assume. So where I'm going with this is for 90 to 120 days, this lingered in my mindset, and I could not shake it. And then, we pivoted the mindset because I'm a positive person, a solutions-oriented person. And I'm like, I'm going to do something about it. And what I'm going to try to do about it is help bring positive energy to the city through doing a show like this where I feature incredible people like you, okay? And that's what the whole influence and impetus behind the I Love Seaville Show was. Where I'm going with this is, that's my firsthand perspective, your firsthand perspective of statues of August 12th, what we do with the statues, August 12th in general. Tough question here.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's a lot to unpack there. So as a Marine, the Union would have been what I would have fallen under. And I think that that history has played itself out. I think that, and some people may not necessarily like how that played out, but it is what it is. Every freedom that we have today has been provided by the Union itself. Nothing, there's nothing that the Confederacy has provided to our life as we have it today. That being said, I understand that within the Virginia General Assembly, there's the issue of protection of war memorials and these things like that. Um, I think the challenge that, and the question that I, that I've lingered and I haven't really, you know, gotten resolved yet is, you know, before we started, you know, going down this road, did someone know that there was an impediment with regard to the General Assembly itself?
I mean, they had to.
And should, and should our attention have been directed there first?
Sure.
As opposed to here? Because if you're, you know, if you already know that you're going through the litigation process and you're already gonna, you're likely to lose, because you haven't gone there yet, and you've gotten, you know, all this stuff, you know, moved around, then you have it from a pragmatic perspective, you really haven't done, you know, what you, um.
You created turmoil.
Correct.
You created, in a lack of better phrase, a shitstorm.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm reading between the lines here, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, so, so, so here's, so personally for me.
Okay.
So, all right, a while back, I, I, um, had this law professor tell me that, that our laws are based on the, the English system. And they're about, um, the acquisition, the maintenance, and the transfer of wealth. That's, I mean, when you break it down, that's how, that's how it boils down to. The same, that it falls under the rule of law, it also falls under capitalism. So what you're looking at is, you know, when you, when you have people, you have people on the street. I mean, I was, um, at the food bank the other day, um, you know, serving there and then some other places. People are concerned more about, do I have enough money to eat? Do I have enough money to live on, as opposed to some of these other things? So, when you look at it from.
Are you talking people, um, people from the African American community?
I'm talking about people.
People in general?
People in general.
Okay.
So, so me personally, I'm looking at it, what am I, what am I going to do to put food on my table, to take care of the responsibilities that I have, that I have now? I, you know, I talked to my, to my grandmother.
Micro perspective.
Yeah, correct. I talked to my, I talked to my grandmother, who's been around here, and, you know, she grew up during that time. And she was like, you know, we used to skate around the park and everything else. Um, I know that there are other people who, that's not, you know, that's not a core issue. But then there, on the, on the flip side, there are people that that means, you know, something negative too, and it elicits a lot of emotion from that perspective. I think, as, as a holistic, um, as a holistic driver, I think that's something that, um, that you would put, you know, on a referendum to find exactly how many people are against that. You know, it's one thing to say, oh, I have 90% of the people that are really here, um, but really, how many people, you know, factually, um, are against that? And then you take, you take that data, and you're, you still have to work out, you know, what's going on with the General Assembly, because you have to get approval for, for some of those things. So it's a, it's a complex, you know, space, uh, with, with regard to all those nuances. And, and you're taking all these different perspectives, you know, into, into play. I personally, I, forget Robert E. Lee, forget the Confederacy, forget everyone else, but that's me. But there, you know, there are other people that, that feel differently, you know, um, with regard to that.
Vanessa Parkill, thank you for joining us, Charisse Pendleton, thank you for joining us, Joshua Tracy, thank you for joining us. All right, I'm going to try to, uh, uh, cut through what you said.
Sure.
Okay, so you are basically saying, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if initially, we had known, or whoever led the charge, that this was something that was tied to the Virginia Assembly, then having a press conference in Lee Park, um, to remove the statues, because have, how the statues made people feel was the wrong path to solution. The right path to solution was to go to the Virginia Assembly as opposed to being in Lee Park initially and having this press conference. Because that press conference perhaps was perceived as for personal gain, and creating a turmoil or tumultuous situation that eventually led to August 12th, when perhaps the right path, if things were deciphered or planned out correctly from the get-go, was to go to Richmond instead of Charlottesville.
Well, so, well, so, so that's, that's how it was done, it was with one person strategy. I'm saying my strategy, if I know that these are the impediments for me getting there, then I'm going to start working on those impediments first, so that I don't create the situation that we've had where, 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 you know, three people essentially have, have lost their lives. I understand the sentiment and the animus behind those, you know, what, what those statues elicited in some people. But if I'm really sincere about, you know, getting that done, you have to remove the impediments to be able to do that. I don't, I mean, you, you.
I totally get what you're saying.
I don't, so I don't get, you know, what, what, what we have, I mean, what's the return on investment?
Yeah.
What is it? I mean, you, you, it's always going to be negative, because you have three people who are, you know.
And a lot of people injured.
Correct.
And a city, and a city that's, uh, had its brand and its image negatively impacted.
Correct.
Dude, I like you, I think you're, I think you're on point here. Um, I'm mindful of your time, we're getting close to punch out time here. Um, this gentleman has given us his most precious commodity, which is his time today during the middle of the workday. And I'm going to be mindful of that. Um, Nina Gregory says, um, uh, candidate, uh, Bellamy.
Mm-hmm.
Um, please, candidate Bellamy Brown, please consider taking the cat bus challenge. Put your car and park and ride the bus for one day. Guess what? You might just walk, you might just talk to a voter or two if you do this. Will you do the, uh, cat bus challenge for Nina Gregory?
Sure, I mean, that's, so, again, this is the early stage. So my, my intent is to, is to be out in the, you know, in the communities and, and all, you know, all the sections of Charlottesville. Um, and I, I understand that, that transit itself, uh, is a challenge here. So I do intend to, you know, experience that, you know, head on. Um, but I, I, you'll, you'll see my face pretty regularly around town and in different places, not, all across, all across the community, uh, here.
I like, what I like about your platform is, I like that you are authentic, you are genuine, you are honest. You are not afraid to, um, speak against issues that may conflict with the neighborhood that you grew up in.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I like that you bring a businessman's mindset to a, a, a litany of council candidates that perhaps are socialistic in their perspective. Um, I like that you are not afraid for hard work, and a microcosm of you not being afraid for hard work is you're running as a freaking independent in a democratic city of Charlottesville, dude. I mean, that takes some big time balls, dude. Um, I just like, I, I think you are, uh, dude, I, this is no BS. I think you have a very bright future in Charlottesville. And we're going to wind down this, um, interview by giving you any direction where you want to go. Um, and I, I'm going to start with one question.
Sure.
And then, give you kind of a final word.
Okay.
And then I'm going to spend about 15 minutes on air after you leave and get back to work, talking behind your back. But talking positively, baby, talking positively.
Fair enough.
Uh, this is what I'm going to ask you, is what can we expect, um, from Bellamy Brown? If elected, to Charlottesville City Council?
Well, you can expect that, uh, within the city council, I will work to build relationships with the other, with the other council members that are there. I think that's an important step in terms of getting work done on behalf of the people. I'm not, I don't, I don't do lip service, I don't do just talking, I need to see results. I'm a results oriented person, and if I'm not bringing deliverables, then what am I here for? So you'll, so you'll see me, you know, foster those relationships and work with, you know, as, as best I can with the council to move the people's business forward. From there, you'll also see me out in the community. I mean, I'll still be going, you know, out to the projects, I'll still be going, um, out to prospect in those different places. I'll, I'll be going over, you know, by Charlottesville High School as well. You'll see my face here, because, y- you know, Abraham Lincoln was, was one of the, um, great politicians who, and, who was, who were out in with the people. And, you know, if we're here to serve the people, we have to know what's going on in the people's minds. I understand within the city council meetings, you know, you have three minute, you know, time limit. You can't get everything done, you know, in that space. People can't be heard in that space. And I think one of the biggest things, um, challenges that we have here is that people don't feel heard. And so, for me, you'll see me out in those, in the various sections of Charlottesville, listening to what people, um, you know, have to say. Like I said, servant leadership is my wheelhouse. Servant leadership is where I feel most natural, where I feel most comfortable, and, and that's what you'll see.
Um, Judah, get up here and get some behind the scenes photos here. Judah Whitkow, one of our producers, we're going to give him a final word. Thank you, Gilly Garth for watching, thank you, Amanda Anastasio for watching, Laura Jackson, thank you for watching. Seven channels across the I Love Seaville Network airing this show, roughly 2,100 people watching you right now. We're going to syndicate this for 30 days across the network and put you in front of a quarter million people. We're going to, uh, take sizzle reels, highlight clips, so this is a game in totality, a football game.
Okay.
And all the touchdown passes, which you said, you had a lot of touchdown passes. We're going to turn into sizzle reels, I appreciate your time, we've got some photos being taken right here. Harris Tolber, you're doing some good things, this is the final word for him, and then we will stay on air and assess what just happened here. Um, show is yours. That's the camera over here, we're going to be taking photos.
Okay.
While you're, uh, doing the final word.
Okay.
Anywhere you want to go.
Um, you, you know, I just want to say, you know, thank you to the, the citizens of, of Charlottesville. Um, I hope that as, you know, I get my, you know, platform out there, my campaign out there, as you see me knocking on your doors, as you see me out in the community, that you'll, you'll ask the hard questions. I think, um, I'm not afraid of, you know, being asked hard questions, I'm not afraid of being asked difficult questions. I think, you know, when you, when you have leaders that are challenged in that space, that gives them the opportunity to really hear what's going on, and ideally, um, to provide sound solutions to those difficult questions. You know, the easy questions, I'm not, I mean, you can, those can be solved, but it's the difficult ones that I really want to be asked, and that we really want to get down to the brass tacks about, and, and bring some sound solutions here.
Okay, fantastic, since he's living, leaving, uh, in the middle of the show, because he's got to get back to work, which we totally understand, we're going to continue on air, can we get a photo here of me and a potential, uh, winning, uh, come on, right here, I'm going to keep talking, you're snapping that pic, baby? This is live TV at its finest, dude, you crushed it today, I freaking mean that too.
Thank you.
Um, I will send you all the content.
Okay.
Uh, that you can send, I appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Um, guys, impressed with this dude? Um, I was close to the time.
Sure.
To 111.
No, it's all right, I'll be fine, I'll be fine.
Kindly.
Absolutely, thank you.
For joining us, wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Um, and then, no. Okay, we'll do that, we'll get a few more, Judah Whitkow says a few more, and then we got to let the gentleman go. How about a handshake and a look at the camera right there? That's what I, it's the first time on the show that I have not been the sharpest dressed guy in the show right here. I got to give this guy some props, thank you for joining us.
Absolutely, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Harris Tolber, um, I want to interact with you. A couple of things that I want to highlight from the show is, I appreciated his authenticity. I appreciated his, um, willingness to answer difficult questions, and we asked some difficult questions of him. Judah, unlock that door for him, thank you very much, sir. Um, I respected the fact that he has been born and raised in the area, 40 years in the city of Charlottesville. 40 years this guy's been in Charlottesville. Um, I respect that he's coming to this race with a businessman's mindset, and I respect the fact that he started using, you know, terminology like return on investment and tangible production. And he was saying things like, this is what I expect to get done from the city, um, but I'm going to do this in a way where I'm still listening to our, um, you know, the citizens in the city. He has a perspective growing up, as he said, of the poor part of town. I didn't say that, he said it, he grew up in the poor part of Charlottesville. And he went from the poor part of Charlottesville, and he made something of himself. He leveraged being a Marine and military service to get, uh, uh, in, in entryway into James Madison University. And then he returns to his home as an entrepreneur, as someone in financial services. I mean, in a lot of ways, what I love and what I stand for, being a social entrepreneur and giving back to the community, you can run a for-profit business and be a conscious capitalist and still make the world a better place. And that's what we stand for, and that's what I freaking saw right there from Bellamy Brown. Um, I think this is a guy that's going to ruffle and, and really make some things happen in council. And interestingly, June 11th is the Democratic primary. June 11th is the Democratic primary, and the Democrats in Charlottesville, the Democrats in Charlottesville are going to determine who they're going to put on the ticket to run to the November election. Bellamy Brown dudes, Bellamy Brown is going to be in the November election. So that June 11th primary is not impacting him, he's going to be there in November. Um, and I think because of his ties to the community and his level-headed mindset and his military service background, did you hear how he was talking about the Vietnam Memorial Monument and how much, how important it was to him? And offering access, the Vietnam Memorial Monument here in Charlottesville? Jim Carpenter, if you have followed this on social media, has done a really good job about this. Access the Vietnam Memorial Monument, we shouldn't have our veterans have to walk up a hill and struggle to get to a monument that's supposed to characterize or champion them. And that's currently the situation in the city of Charlottesville. So that was one of his number one platform tenants. I mean, that is different than a lot of peeps in this election right now. Um, I, and you know what, I'm going to cut straight to the chase, okay? Right now, the people that are running for Charlottesville City Council, they have a, a number of things in common, and I am not marginalizing anyone, but the things they have in common is, they're white, okay? We have a lot of white folks running for Charlottesville City Council right now. And I straight up asked them, I'm like, Bellamy Brown, does, did this influence you, being an African American, of you wanting to get into this race and represent the city? And you know what his answer was? He said, no, I am here to represent Charlottesville, because I believe in Charlottesville, and because I want to better my community. You know, he very easily, very easily could have said, I'm getting into this race because I, I am an African American and I want to represent my community. And he chose not, he chose not to pursue that path. He said, instead, I'm running for Charlottesville City Council to make the community better. That is baller as, you know what, from where I stand. Um, and I think this dude is offering a perspective that is much needed in our community. And I think if he gets on council, and you can go anywhere you want, if he gets on council, we're going to have somebody that has a different mindset than a lot of people. And I embrace that. And I, and, and you know what, to run as an independent, when the only time in the history of the city of Charlottesville, and that's Mayor Walker, and Mayor Walker's come on this show, the only time in the history of Charlottesville that an independent has won, the only time in the history of Charlottesville is Mayor Walker, when she won her election. And I recounted a story right here on this program, where Dave Norris, the one-time mayor of the city of Charlottesville, came in here and he sat in that chair right there. And he was in the brain trust, along with Michael Payne, who's running for Charlottesville City Council as well. And Dave Norris said, he remembered a story where Mayor Walker went up to Dave Norris and Michael Payne, and Mayor Walker said to Dave Norris and Michael Payne, guys, I'm going to run as an independent. And Dave Norris immediately said, I sulked, I put my head down, I looked at the floor, and I begged and I pleaded Mayor Walker to say, hell no, don't do that. And you look at what Mayor Walker did, she won, she won. You can make a legitimate argument that there were some, uh, you know, some circumstances that helped her get that W. Um, and post A-12, being very vocal in city council, Charlottesville City really looking for a radical and drastic change after, after, after things were boggled and handled so, handled so poorly in A-12. So you can say, and some people say this, I have said this on the show, maybe her victory is an anomaly and not the norm. We're about to see with Bellamy Brown, whether or not this victory, whether Mayor Walker was an anomaly with her victory or not, because he's running as an independent. And I know Democrats in the city of Charlottesville that have asked Bellamy Brown to run as a Democrat, as an opportunity to co-brand and do a joint platform, and he said, no, I'm going to do this my way. And to further put that in perspective, I offered him the, um, I, Jay, I totally agree. Jay Wyon says, I guess who really was killing it? Jay Wyon, he was killing it, baby. I offered this gentleman an opportunity to stream the show to his Facebook page, and he's like, you know what? Stream it to your channels, Jerry, I'm going to share it to mine later. I am going to go about running this election my way. And I respect the hell out of somebody that has the confidence and the security and the, the sense of self, the sense of self to say, I have a plan of attack, this is how I'm going to go about my life. I'm going to go about my life with a no regrets mindset, and if I win or lose or draw, so be it, but I'm not going to backtrack on anything. And that's what Bellamy Brown embodies, and I got big time props and respect for here. Our director, Harris Tolber, wants to jump in the mix. Tolber, anywhere you want to go, the show is yours, sir.
Jerry, uh, I mean, I was very impressed with Bellamy Brown, like, right off the bat, you know, I, I, I see a little bit of myself as a Charlottesvillean in him, you know, grew up, kid in Charlottesville, uh, went to JMU, soccer player, probably played for the JMU club soccer team like I did, spent some time in DC, and then returned, he's, returned to his roots, Charlottesville, to do his best for, as, as he said, a servant. He said, it's in his blood to be a servant of, 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 of other people, of our community. And, um, I mean, that's very respectable, I mean. And, and right off the bat, his whole approach to almost every issue you, you asked him about was very calculated and very.
Thought out.
It was thought out, it wasn't like coming from any, like, he, it was coming from a very third person kind of, like, what's best for our community type of place.
I love it, I love it, and you know what, I'm going to throw this back to you, and, and this is, and I am struggling with this as well. And Harris, you are an inner circle member of my team. Um, Judah's an inner circle member of my team, I, I talk about this often here in the shop. I also feel compelled to run in some kind of capacity and do like my civic duty to give back to this community. Because 19 years, 11 as a business owner in Charlottesville, I feel so freaking blessed, man. Like, I just don't understand, and I've been struggling with this so much, it's like, why do the haves and the have-nots? Wh- the gap and the disparity between the haves and the have-nots? The gap and the disparity between the haves and the have-nots, when the haves and the have-nots have done such things, you know, in a lot of ways, so little different, you know? I mean, if, if I was born, you know, I'm born in, as a Miller into a white family and was educated at a private school in Williamsburg, Virginia, okay? I came into a world blessed with opportunities that other people are not blessed with. And, and that, Harris Tolber, has created a sense of like strife, a sense of like conflict. You know, it's just, it's caused me to like consider so much, especially since the birth of my son. It makes me like realize that like, not everyone unfortunately is born equally. And when you're not born equally, some folks have to work harder to get to other points that other people don't have to. And I'm just like, you know, and because of that, that is like literally Harris motivating me to get involved civically. And like first I thought enough was like, enough of this was like filling a role with my business as being a social entrepreneur. And guys, in freaking 12, my business is 11 years old in May. And when I started this company, and I talk about this often on this program, I started this company with my life savings in 2008. Who in the hell starts a business in 2008 in the midst of an economic depression? Who does that? And who does it out of a condominium with two of his best buddies living in there, a bachelor infested condominium with a dog traipsing all over the place? Who does that? That's what I did. And I took my life savings of $32,000 and I invested it in this business. And seven years into the company, I had zero, seven months, seven months into the company, I had zero clients. And I watched the life savings dwindle down to nothing. And I literally had to go to the Panda Garden buffet on Emmett Street across from Lambeth Commons. My old stopping grounds is the second year at the University of Virginia with Ziploc bags, freaking Ziploc bags. And I had to steal food from the bit, from the Panda Garden buffet with Ziploc bags. When they weren't looking, I was funneling food into Ziploc bags. And that was my food for two or three days. And then next thing you know, Tolber, we get a couple of clients and those couple of clients we do extremely well by. And they tell a couple of other people and they tell a couple of other people. I secure an Andy McClure, one of the largest restaurateurs in Charlottesville, Citizen Burger Bar, the Virginian Restaurant, Citizen Bull Shop, the Biltmore, and build brands and websites for him. And then next thing you know, this business starts to steamroll and it gains momentum and now have 15,000 square feet of commercial real estate under ownership and arguably the top advertising agency in Charlottesville. And here is where I'm freaking going with this. Where I'm going with this, and I'm going to throw this back to you, is like, Harris, if I had not have had the foundation that my parents had provided me from a schooling standpoint in Williamsburg, Virginia at Walsingham Academy, if I had not had this foundation of learning, you know, how to read and write and, and math, because I certainly didn't pick it up at the University of Virginia. The only thing I cared about at the University of Virginia was women, cold beer and partying. The only thing that I cared about in UVA in my time there, not school. Okay? And if I hadn't had that foundation, how could I have possibly have launched and run this business? I could not have. Okay? And here's another question that I'm struggling with. When I started this business and I went and was calling on clients seven months in, what if I had started this business and I was an African American and I had not gone to private school? Would I have gotten the clients? Would I have been given the leeway or the opportunity? Or would I have been given the latitude to make mistakes like I was given? And dude, I struggle with this every single day. I mean, like literally this conflict, this mindful conflict that I literally wake up to the point where I'm waking up now at four in the morning and like have a diary or a journal next to my bed. And I'm taking the struggle and putting it on paper just to like figure out what is on my mind and like use it as like some kind of cathartic or like therapeutic, like, you know, strategy session for me. I mean, Tolber, jump in here.
Jerry, like, for me, I do that exact same thing, you know? When I've got a ton of stuff on my mind, what do I do? I grab my guitar, I let it out emotionally. And I saw you, you wrote, I actually checked out your poem that you wrote on Facebook, man. And like dead honest, you got some skills poetry wise. I guess I could do a little interviewing of you right now. Can you give us some thoughts? You were up at, at a vineyard, was it, or something?
I was, I was at a brewery.
Brewery with your, with your son.
Yeah.
And, yeah, what was going through your mind when you were, when you were writing that?
Okay, this is what was going through my mind. I am sitting at a brewery in Nelson County, Virginia on a Sunday afternoon, going in with my family, buying $7 beers and, and literally like sitting on a picnic blanket, enjoying the sunshine, watching the sun kiss the Blue Ridge Mountains. And I'm like, do you understand how freaking blessed I feel to have my kid, my family and my friends on a blanket on a Sunday afternoon? Watching the sun set on the Blue Ridge, spending $7 on a beer, racking up a $50 tab, just enjoying life? When other people on a Sunday are struggling and just trying to get through life and pay bills and put food on their plate and keep their electric on and keep the water going and get the rent paid? I mean, what the hell? I'm like effing struggling with this, man. It just like makes me like, I like, I get like the blessed nature of things. And I totally understand that I am blessed and I am not trying to marginalize anything. How I got here is by working 80 hours a week. I wake up at the butt crack of morning all the time and I straight up outwork people. And I'm not going to marginalize the effort that I've put into 80 hours a week over 11 years, 11 years in May, one vacation in 11 years. And that was my honeymoon. One vacation in 11 years, okay? Disposable income didn't went to spending anything, it went back into the business. But where I'm struggling is, this is what I'm struggling. Would the same opportunities be there for someone of color that I had? Okay? And another thing that I struggle with is my mom is a Cuban immigrant. My mom and my Mima and my poppy and Mima and poppy and Espanol meet grandma and granddad. My mom literally had to leave and her father and her mother, my grandparents, had to leave everything that they had in Cuba behind for fear of Fidel Castro's communist regime taking over Cuba and what he was going to do with people who did not follow their communist mindset. And that was the Gomez family, my mom, my Mima and my poppy. So she had a backpack and was told you can put anything in you want in a backpack and leave everything else behind. We're going to leave our home behind. We are going to leave our, we are going to leave our jobs behind. And we're going to get under, get in this barge on the basement of this boat at 2:30 in the morning. And we're going to go from Cuba to Miami, Florida, and we're going to start a brand new life. And we're going to do that right now. So go get your backpack, Mary Miller, my mom. Go get your backpack and put your, your stuff, she's in the freaking third grade, Harris. Go get your backpack, put all the stuff that you, that means to you that can fit in a backpack and let's go. We have to meet this boat. It's taking off in, in an hour and 90, hour and 30 minutes. And they go on this boat and they go from a middle-class lifestyle in Cuba to literally being a ditch digger poppy, my grandfather. And Mima, a hotel maid. And my mom being put into the third grade of an English-speaking school, English-speaking school without being able to speak English. And she literally said that these people were the meanest kids in the world to her. She knew that kids were running up to her and ridiculing and making fun of her and she could not understand what they were saying. Until to this day, until this day, when she relays and recounts this story to my brother and I, she gets misty-eyed and choked up because she understands, I mean, that's like the textbook example of like PTSD. She's 69 years old, something from third grade when she was nine years old. 60 years later is still impacting her life? I mean, and I see, and we can talk about this if we want from a macro standpoint. And I see the gentleman that's in the White House talking about building a wall around our country and keeping immigrants out. Dude, I am a son of an immigrant. Like the son of an immigrant.
I mean, our whole, our whole country is our immigrants, man.
Yeah.
Like every single person that's ever, ever moved here.
Right.
Other than, you know, native, native American, people of Native American descent.
It's like so freaking close-minded to me. And as a result, that's why I feel compelled to get involved civically. And that's why when I sit across from people like Bellamy Brown, or I sit across from people like Lloyd Snook, or whoever's running for council, David Tiscano, when David Tiscano joined us on this program, seven years, seven years in Richmond, I mean, in the house, I like, I just like, I admire civic duty. I mean, when Counselor Heather Hill joins us on this program, she is freaking brilliant. And she can be an entrepreneur and she can do whatever the hell she wants. Instead, she's working 80 hours a week for $18,000 and taking shit from half the community in the city of Charlottesville. I mean, if that's not civic duty, I don't know what civic duty is. And I feel the same like, ah. The same like sense of like wanting to get involved because of like where we're at from a success standpoint and where we're at from a community standpoint. Tolber, jump in here.
Yeah, Jerry, I think anytime you put yourself in the spotlight and try to take a stand for something, you know, you're going to polarize people. And, and that's just, I mean, that's part of the heat you got to take, you know? I think you got to have the courage to kind of nail that, you know, and just, and just accept it. And, you know, Charlottesville and our country, I mean, and just with the human race, racism is just a phenomenon that I, you know, has always boggled my mind. Somehow it's been prevalent throughout history. And it's still, I mean, we still have problems with it to this very day. My grandmother, her name's Nancy Frank, she is 98 years old. She's about to turn 99. And when she was 16 years old, she escaped Nazi Germany, right before World War II was started. Came over to the United States by herself, wrote letters to her parents and essentially convinced them eventually to, to come over before they were harmed by threatening self-harm essentially. And that's what inspired her parents to hop on a boat over to the United States. And man, like, it boggles my mind. And this comes, and you and I were talking about this recently, you know? Hateful imagery. The way I look at hateful imagery, I was talking to you about this, is, you know, for me, it's, it's no different from the way I look at the Confederate flag issue, you know? And I went to Western Alma High School, I've talked about this before. Students would sometimes wear Confederate flags, you know, and hateful imagery of that sort on their shirts, on their hats. And really all that was going through my mind when I was walking through the hallways and seeing these things are like, like, this, this was essentially equivalent to my grandmother walking through her high school, or her middle school in Germany. And having her fellow students like walking around with essentially swastikas on their shirts. And she's told me stories about walking to school and, and other students knocking her books out of her hands when World War II was getting underway, or calling her names, or, you know, things of that nature. And I think those things still bother her to this very day. I mean, she's 98 years old and, you know.
Dude, it stings.
It stings.
It's like raw, it's real. It's like, dude, and it hasn't been since like, it honestly is like a direct correlation with the birth of my son Trey and like opening my mind to perspective that I otherwise did not have. And it's because this little freaking human being that is 20, and I just got found out today, literally was texted this by my wife this morning. He went to a doctor's appointment. Trey is perfect. He weighs 21, he weighs basically 22 pounds. He got three shots and a finger prick on his finger to see how he was doing. And he was so brave. Okay? And I get a text message about this, about like needing to get shots and his finger pricked. And he's perfect and he's 24 pounds and he's doing great. And I get this text message from her and I like, my eyes get like misty-eyed. And like, I'm like, it like is eliciting a sense of emotion that I otherwise didn't have because it was like, I don't know. I mean, it's like this person just needs me to like step up and be better and like be a better version of myself and be like, like a better man. This is so challenging. I feel so conflicted right now. This is the I Love Seaville Show. My name is Jerry Miller. I've truly enjoyed connecting with you, this platform. If you're just tuning into the program, the breaking news is Bellamy Brown is running for Charlottesville City Council. He did hear, right here on this set. And he is going to run as an independent in the city of Charlottesville. And he is going to challenge, he's up for the challenge of challenging everybody. And I encourage you, if you're just tuning into this program, to go to iloveceville.com. Harris Tolber and Judah Wickhauer and Lauren Linsky are going to work their tails off to get this package up on iloveceville.com in the next, what, 90 minutes or so, maybe two hours? And I want you to watch the interview from start to finish. And when you watch the interview from start to finish, I think you're going to see what I saw. And it's somebody that's like a straight baller, man. Like someone that is literally committed to making our community a better place. And I love that because we embody those qualities as well. I'm going to get off air. I got three meetings coming up. I love you guys. I appreciate your support on today's program. My name is Jerry Miller. For Judah Wickhauer, for Harris Tolber, for Lauren Linsky, this is the I Love Seaville Show on the I Love Seaville Network. We will see you tomorrow at 12:30 with more positivity. I close the show the same way every time, Harris Tolber. If you guys give more than you take, you will make our community better than ever. Give more than you take and you will probably win in the end. Also embody the golden rule. It's not about religion. It's literally about treating people with respect. Treat others as you would want them, as you would want them to treat you. And if you treat others as you, you would want them to treat you, you will make our community better. It's the golden rule. It seems like such common sense to me, but so many people are not embodying the golden rule. And if you take anything from this program, I hope it's that. The golden rule. Treat others as you would want to be treated yourself. My name is Jerry Miller. It's the I Love Seaville Show on the I Love Seaville Network. We will catch you tomorrow at 12:30, baby.